I'd like to call to order this meeting at 6:01 PM in the City Hall Meeting Room. This meeting is not being recorded by the City Council. If any other persons present are recording, please notify me at this time.
Actually, the Council is recording for the purpose of minutes.
Okay.
And Don Moran is recording also.
Thank you, Don.
Mary, recorder.
Mary from the recorder. Anyone else?
I'm going to record till we go into executive session.
Excuse me?
I'm just going to record the audio till we go into executive.
No problem. No person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the Chair. And all persons shall, and all persons shall, at the request of the Chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the Chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the Chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the Chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Roll call of members. Clerk Scott?
Counselor Jarvis. I see that he has not logged in yet. I will come back to him. Vice President Gilmore, Gwen?
Here.
Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley is not in attendance. He notified us. Counselor Bullock?
Here.
President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Lapiensky?
I'm here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgji?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Toranzo?
Here.
Counselor Jarvis? I do not see that he's logged in. I will try to keep an eye on it and let you know if he, when he joins the meeting. Vice President Gwen, you do have a call.
Thank you. Can someone read the order to suspend the rules of procedure? I have it here. Someone? Counselor Toranzo?
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council waive the rules of procedure and order and disposition of business to allow the agenda items to be taken out of order. Majority vote required.
Do we have a second on that? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
This is a debatable motion. I see you're getting jumpy here. The public, no, him, the public should be allowed to comment on this. The rules of procedure ought not to be suspended to silence their voice. So why don't we hear from the public and then suspend the rules of procedure and go through the rest of our agenda?
Public comment on the agenda?
Point of order.
We don't want it to be.
Point of order. There is no public comment on this agenda because it's not a regular meeting. There will be public comments on Wednesday.
Yes, but the public would like to comment on what we're doing tonight. And they can't if we've already done it. So I object, and I consider that motion to be out of order.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
To go into an executive session, don't you have to open a public meeting first?
We have to read the motion and what's qualifying to go into executive session.
But you don't have to open with a public, public meeting first?
Not.
Isn't that what we're opening? This is a public meeting.
Okay.
Currently, this is a public meeting.
But no public comment unless it's on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks for that clarification. Good for all of us. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of waiving the rules of procedure? Opposed?
No.
No.
Could I see a show of hands for yes, please?
Counselor Elmer?
President Gilmore is a yes.
Thank you.
Opposed?
No.
No. Any abstentions? Seeing none? Okay, the motion passes that we'll waive the rules of procedure. This brings us to our only motion that is going to be on the agenda tonight, and that's a vote that's going to be coming to enter into executive session. Before we do that, I just want to kind of quantify what we're doing. Executive session deals with very specifics. We're going to read those before we go into executive session, if that's what we choose to do. Executive session is brought in this situation so we can hear about litigation and limit any further liability of the municipality. And that's really why we're going into executive session. There are things that we can't discuss that would go against some of the liabilities of the municipality. And we want to make sure that anything that's discussed doesn't violate any of those rules. All subjects that be relevant without compromising the purpose for which the executive session was called. And do you want me to talk on 38 now? Or when we make the motion? Because isn't that part of the motion?
So you will have to state, after the motion is made, the reasons down here.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, that's all right.
Chair?
Yeah, sure.
Will there be discussion on the motion?
Discuss.
For?
Oh, yeah.
It's a debatable motion.
Yeah, we will, we'll discuss it and, and go from that. So that's the reason that it would be brought into executive session, for the very specific reasons that are in the motion. And then we will go from there. Does someone want to read the motion?
I'm happy to read the motion. I still have my computer.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to enter the executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the Chair so declares per Mass. General Law, Section 30A21A3. Roll call, majority vote required.
Motion's made. Do we have a second on the motion?
Can you assure us that this won't be about appealing the case?
Do we have a second on the motion? The motion has been made and seconded? Counselor Healy? I open the floor to the counselors for discussion. Counselor Mayo?
I am, I'm against this motion. And for the reasons, I think it's been emailed to us by the citizens of Greenfield. It's been told to us on, on various social media. It's been told to us by the protesters out front that they think that this needs to be more transparent. And in the name of transparency, I cannot support this.
Thank you. Counselor Bullock?
My understanding is that the, there has to be as much detail as possible without compromising the reason for confidentiality for executive session, and that should be included in the notice. So I'm actually unsure what this executive session is about beyond, beyond reason three.
Okay.
Counselor Jarvis has joined the meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Bullock, I would agree that we know that reason three is there. There's information within that statement that they're going to talk to us in inclusion in the executive session.
Yeah, the concern that I have is that when I went over the open meeting laws again today, it says that purpose three must be used for pending in court, imminently threatened or demonstrably likely. It is not appropriate to enter executive session simply because a party has an attorney or has a right to appeal a decision by a public body. So if this meeting is to discuss an appeal, I'm concerned that we'll be violating open meeting laws.
I, I, to my knowledge, that's not going to be the case, but I don't have much more information than we all have because it wasn't discussed independently with any of us. I would believe that if we get into this and we feel that the executive session is going in a direction that we're not comfortable with as the legislative side of government, then we make that known and make sure we stay within those parameters. Counselor, Counselor Ricketts?
Yes. I just want to say that this was a very difficult decision for me. As a person of color, I felt like coming to this meeting was going to be a slap in the face to Officer Buchanan. So it was very difficult for me to come. So having said that, I'm here tonight because I do want to hear what the mayor and that legal team has to say, but I'm with Counselor Bullock. I have some apprehension and some nervousness. I don't want this meeting to be a sign that we agree with anything that might happen in the next few days with our administration. So if Chief Hague is no longer administrative lead, or then all of a sudden there's an appeal two days from now, I don't want this meeting to look like we all agreed. That is my fear, and so I have to say that. But I do want to learn more about what this is all about. But just know that this was difficult.
Counselor Ricketts, let me just say that in my role this evening, I will make sure that I do everything in my ability to make sure we are discussing and getting information so we have knowledge to move forward and make no decision. This, I believe, is an informative session. If we feel that it's going in a different path, in my ability, I will stop it. Counselor Lapiensky?
Yeah, so it's true that we don't know any more than the public does, but we do know a lot more than we're pretending to know because the mayor was quoted on the front page of the recorder about a week ago saying she was going to appeal. So her mind is made up, and she's going to do it with taxpayer money. So to be quite frank, it's obvious that this is a captive audience meeting for her to sell us on the value of the police before we vote on their budget. I don't believe that this is about what it's, what we are told it's about. And I'm a no on this because, quite frankly, I see no reason to protect the privacy of a bigot.
If I would make one comment, and that is, I said to another counselor that I had a phone conversation with, that if we were able to see into the future and know what was going on, then, then I would probably agree with you. But I don't know that. I am truly open to the fact that we are going to receive information tonight that is relevant to this community. And it's, as an elected official, I feel we owe it to our constituents to find out what these attorneys, what our insurance company, what, what needs to be discussed that they felt is not public knowledge at this point. Remember, anything that's discussed in executive session that is of public record does not get changed. It's still of public record. Just because it's entered into an executive session, if it's a piece of information that deals with public record, it remains public record.
Then how does the public access it if it's executive session?
Let me go to President Gilmore.
Thank you. I was trying not to raise hand feature. I wasn't sure if that was going to work in this format.
I saw it only because someone pointed at it.
So I wanted to make a point that the City Council, in my first few years, went into executive session on a fairly regular basis to discuss all sorts of matters, legal and personnel. This isn't unusual, and I don't understand why people feel like this makes us somehow complicit. I don't understand where people got the idea that we're going to have some sort of gag order on us, that we're never going to be able to take up any of these issues. If people are concerned about the mayor and her motives, I will tell you, she's not going to be able to put us under hypnosis and force us to vote one way or another. This is a normal part of city government. And I hope everyone can calm down and listen because we can't move forward until we have the information, and we can't get the information until we go into executive session. And if we don't do it tonight, we're going to be doing it on Wednesday, so.
Thank you, President Gilmore. I appreciate that. Counselor Forgji?
Just to clarify, executive session, if I could. So we discuss according to a set of guidelines that's laid down in law, what we can and cannot do. When the matter is resolved, all right, then the minutes are no longer confidential. They become public record. And that could be, you know, a matter that we're going to court, and that could take 10 months and then release the records after that. Or it could be tomorrow. It all depends on what the topic that is discussed in executive session is.
There will be, there will be minutes of our executive session taken. They will be held, and at a time that the information is not determined to be detrimental to the municipality, they are released. So they don't disappear forever. But while we're involved in litigation or any kind of suits that might be filed against the municipality from this, those have to be held. And that's where the liability comes. It's not always is clear of why this liability becomes. We could have far-reaching legs to this, where people that are involved might file new litigation against the municipality. And it's protection of that information that we're most concerned with. Anyone that hasn't spoken yet that would like to make a comment? Counselor Disorder?
So I have a, I have a few things to say. I think that, I, I don't want to go into exec, executive session, and I'll explain why when I read my statement. But I think when we get in there, we all have to be very clear that we have lawyers here who are lawyers for the defendant. And so I think that it's great, you know, that everyone says that they want to hear everything, but I have concerns that, that probably will not be, I don't know, but probably will not be what we're hearing. So I'm just going to read my statement. Okay? I spent, so I'm against it. I spent over 12 hours reading what was there in the docket. Every submission by both the plaintiff and the defendant. The jury found the, the city and the chief guilty on six of the seven questions outside of the punitive damages. If you have not read the court docket and you, you think that we'll be hearing both sides of the story, I, I don't think that that's true. The attorney, and the attorneys from, and I think that they're representing Maya and the city, and the mayor and the chief are the losing defendants, who most likely will be lobbying for our position on appeal. So I don't want to put myself in that. Question six and seven that we were found guilty on are why we really shouldn't enter into executive session. The fact that the chief and our current mayor bypassed a female officer and Patrick Buchanan for the fourth time in 2021, while final arguments for this discrimination case were being prepared, is shocking. The female officer and Buchanan were number two and number five on the sergeant's list. The chief chose number one, three, four, and six. Mayor Rita Gartner concurred or had a discussion, as it was said, in the minutes of the trial. This decision was subsequently added to the plaintiff's claim, claims, and most likely clinched the verdict and added to the settlement. Equally shocking, all from the transcript, it was announced in December of 2021 that the start date of the trial would be at the beginning of the new year, this year. Then on January 5th of 2022, our mayor signed a three-year contract with our chief for $170,000 a year. Not a one-year contract, but a three-year, just as the trial was about to start. I do not need to be in executive session with them explaining strategy to me or hearing how they will best handle our legal and fiduciary responsibilities. You have a lot of people here who are not happy with how this is being handled. Is there even the tiniest shred of evidence that the culture here will change by us going into a private meeting? If you sincerely want to be part of the solution, just say no. I'll bet most of you here know in your gut that this meeting is a very bad idea. I certainly didn't want it, but I was pressured. Let's admit it. Who in their right mind wants to be viewed as being uncooperative with the mayor and the chief of police? Mark my words, we will be complicit from this day forward. We do not have the National Labor Relations Board to back us up. All we have is each other. I am voting no. It's time for a change, not in our hands.
Thank you, Counselor Disorder. Is there any counselor that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Counselor Elmer, I'm sorry. Counselor Elmer, did you want to speak?
Thank you, no.
Okay. Counselor Toranzo?
Yeah, this is clearly a conflicted situation. I can see where, certainly there's perception of where this could go, and then also the need for information. And I wasn't really sure what I was, what I was going to do coming in here tonight. I will say, I think that it ultimately, I feel comfortable enough with, with what people have spoken about in their feelings that were we to go into executive session, I feel comfortable enough that if it's, if it's steering in a way that would violate open meeting law or make us feel uncomfortable, that we could kibosh it. And that being, and I don't think that anybody will be not vocal about it at that point. So I, I'm tempted to not get ahead of ourselves, see where it's at, and if, like I said, if we don't like where we're going, then, then put, put the brakes on.
Thank you. Let me just talk from me as not, as the chair, acting chair of the meeting. I'm a person that likes information because I like to make educated decisions. I also believe in communication because that's what I do. Perception is not reality. Information is reality. I cannot proceed without information. I don't know what information is in store for us because it is an executive session based on the parameters which were read. I believe it's in the best interest of the municipality to hear what is being said and then let us determine if it's in our interest of the people of Greenfield to use that information to make decisions that are going to have to be made. I do not believe that any of us know what's going to happen in that meeting. Anything that we believe is much, as much as Counselor Disorder believes is going to happen, I believe the opposite, that it's not going to happen, and neither one of us knows. I would just like to say that some of the best policy becomes from listening to different opinions and then trying to find the best solution. I don't think we're going to make any huge decisions this evening in executive session because there's no motions to be made. It's, I truly believe an informational session that would, is needed for me to understand why, because I really don't know why either. So I will be voting yes because I have to know. Anyone that hasn't spoken? Counselor Haley?
I also agree. I'm a man of information, right? And I need to hear what needs to be said to make good decisions. I never make up my mind based on hearsay or what I read in the paper. I've read the transcripts, you know? So I have that, that information in front of me, but I'd like to at least hear everything that comes out and before I make up my mind on anything, right? And I think it's important for everybody to hear, hear that information. Otherwise, you're, you're making a decision without rationale, right? So I'll be voting yes.
Counselor Jarvis, did you have, I see, do you have anything to say?
Okay. What, my time's up already? No, I just have to agree with Counselor Gwen and Counselor Haley on it. I believe the more information we hear and the more informed we are, the better off we are. And I too, if we're going out of bounds, I'll be the first one to say, stop the meeting, and this is the end of it. Because out of bounds is out of bounds. So that's, that's, that's how I feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Jarvis. Anyone that hasn't spoken?
Is that someone's phone or is it?
They're trying to turn it on.
Counselor Lapiensky, did you have something? I saw your hand up.
Yeah. I, I think the notion that information is always good is absurd, and I'll tell you why. Would you invite Exxon to testify in a closed session about the dangers of global warming? Would you invite Philip Morris to testify in a closed session about the dangers of smoking? Why do you want these lawyers, who have a legal obligation to lie to you, to do that? And if they're going to do it anyway, let them do it. Let the people see. No one in this room believes you when you say that they are going to give you true information, which I assume was implied. Yes, they're going to give you information. They're going to tell you that the police chief has many black friends and that he loves everyone and doesn't mean most of the things that people are accusing him of. It's ridiculous, and there's no way that they're going to come in here and tell you, oh, he did it.
Anything else? Seeing none. Anyone else? Counselor Mayo?
Essentially, I'm concerned that you say that we're going to be given information that might, and my belief is that may, information that we may be getting is going to be not on what's on the agenda. And that's what we were voted on, to bring it into executive session. So if information comes out that's not on this, then you, you can't have a do-over. You're in the executive session. You're not going to be voting on it again. So if you're apprehensive at all, I would, you know, and we, we already have some facts. The jury made a decision. It found against the town. It found against the, the chief. There is information based on fact given to us by a jury in the court of law. So that's fact. That's not, that's not hearsay. So we have that information. It's been available in the newspapers. It's been available, made to us as counselors and probably to the public at large, if you go to the Supreme Court and look for the docket or the docket numbers. So there is facts already there. There's a fact already been rendered. So I'm concerned that information may be flowing in the, in the information that may be provided to us by the attorneys that may go off topic, and we will, may have counselors feeling uncomfortable, and they may have voted differently had they heard that information. So that's what I'm concerned about. And you can't get a do-over in executive session. Once it's, once it's there, you just can't say, raise my hand and I, I feel uncomfortable.
Sure you can.
And stop it.
Sure you can.
Yes, we can.
There's nothing preventing us from that. There's nothing preventing us from, from having interaction in the executive session.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying we're voting to go into executive session.
Correct.
Once, once you get into executive session, you can't vote to get out of it.
You can stop the meeting.
At the council.
Legislature, the legislatures, you know, are, we're, you know, we're the legislative... Wait, legislate, the legislatures, you know, are, we're, you know, we're the legislative division of the city. The city is the one that was sued. You know, we have to get some of this information to see where the city and where this is comes from and where the where the finances are involved or are pieces of this that we have to know and make determinations for the future of the city. That is our job from the legislative side. It's not, the executive side and the legislative side have two different working pieces. We are that piece. Counselor Gilmore? President Gilmore, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to point out that, you know, we've got the judicial branch of the government who has already, you know, performed their function, and we are not in a position to overturn that. So as far as I'm concerned, we should not be really relitigating that court case that was in court for seven years, and it's done. The jury came back. What we need to discuss is how we move forward as a community and what our role is in that starting tonight and going into the future. But we're not going to know what that is until we hear this information. And on that note, I would like to call the question.
Any discussion on?
Calling the question is not debatable.
I just wasn't sure where Counselor Disorder was going with that. We've had.
Made and seconded. You have to take a vote.
Motions and made and seconded to go to call the vote. All those in favor? To call the vote?
Roll call, please. I mean, we're so tuned into. Any counselor can request a roll call. I've requested a roll call on calling the question. So if you vote yes, it ends debate. If you vote no, it doesn't end debate.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Vice President Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Thank you.
President Gilmore, would you like to vote?
Yes and yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Rickets?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
One moment, please. Yes. Eight yes, a majority is required. The motion passes.
Okay, the question has been called. Clerk Scott, do I need to read the motion one more time? Where are we at with this?
This and this, and it might be a good idea to clarify the motion.
Sure. Okay, let me make a few statements before we do that. The public body will adjourn from the executive session, and we will not reconvene in open session after the executive session. At the closing of the executive session will be the closing of the evening. The discussion's open session would have a detrimental effect on the public body's negotiating position, bargaining position, litigation position, or ability to obtain qualified applicants. That is all part of executive session purposes. It'll take a majority vote. Do we want to clarify the motion? We've said it. My motion went somewhere.
Sorry.
Somebody needed it.
That's right. Counselor Bullock, do you want to read that motion one more time?
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to enter executive session for reason number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares per Mass General Law Section 30A 21A 3. Roll call, majority vote required.
So section three for executive session purposes, roll call, vote. Clerk Scott?
Counselor Jarvis?
He's muted.
You're muted.
He's muted.
Frozen.
Counselor Jarvis?
He's frozen.
He's frozen. Let's go.
I'll come back to him.
Shake your head.
Counselor Jarvis, can you repeat?
Yes. Yeah, I said yes. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Nope.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Vice President Gilmore?
That's President Gilmore.
Excuse me. President Gilmore?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Absolutely no.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
President, excuse me. Counselor Rickets?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Majority is obtained, the motion passes.
All right, before we enter into executive session, I'd like to clear the room and clear the building. I thank you all for coming in this evening.
Thank you.